Meeting, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, four P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertlet.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena, City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. The mission is comments, questions, discussion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, we have um just two things I want to really briefly say.
Well.
Um, first, happy International Women's Day to all the gals. Um, and then second, I just wanted to, I think, take a second to um reflect on the life and impact of um longtime journalist Chuck. I it's like very shocking that there have been so many colors of our community that have passed unexpectedly and um I think it's just important that we recognize all the impact that he had on our community.
Thank you. You said two.
That was awesome.
International women. Any other comments or questions from the commission? If not, I just wanna um, I know we have a guest in our midst and I want to turn your attention to, we have a clock there on the, in the, you know, on that television. And that clock, as you see it, is set for two minutes. And we'll beg that you respect two minutes if you have to speak. Any other comments from the commission? If not, uh recommendations from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Perry, you have the floor.
All right.
All right.
I'm on the news.
We can hear you, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Nancy Perry from District Two. Why do I hear an echo? Um, does that sound okay for you? First.
We can hear it.
Okay. First, the H C C wishes to congratulate the commission for conducting such an orderly, professional search for a new city manager. We particularly appreciate being included in the process. We worked hard crafting good questions for the candidates and we appreciate the fact that our questions were used in the interviews. We also wish to congratulate Tim Burton for being selected for the position. We look forward to working with you, sir, in the future. Secondly, we have a suggestion box on our display in the hallway on the first floor of the City County Building down near the election office. The public actually leaves quite a few suggestions in our box and Peggy maintains it and she told me today that about half the suggestions uh ask for additional public sports facilities. So that would be something to think about when you're deciding where to spend the ARPA funds. Thirdly, your slide number six in your agenda slides, and we haven't gotten to them yet, but it's the one that says new internal requests and it lists the additional three requests for ARPA funding. This is the first time that we have seen those, although the last time I spoke to you, Commissioner Dean did mention that they were coming and Commissioner Dean had asked how we were going to handle the addition of having more funding requests since we'd already sent you our recommendations for dispersing the ARPA funds. So I will take those three new funding requests back to the H C C. The H C C meets for the next time on March twenty-second, which is two weeks in the future. And at that meeting, we'll discuss the additional three funding requests and then we'll let you know we'll decide how we're going to prioritize what is now a total of ten funding requests. We'll let you know what we've decided after that. And that is all I have, sir.
Uh, Ms. Perry?
Yes.
One question. How many do you consider half of the questions were about the sports complex?
How did I know that it was?
No, no, how many?
Oh, gosh, I really don't know. She said a lot. I think I think she's fished them out at least a couple times and there were at least twenty requests each time. Have you, do you know where that little box is?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you, if you look in there, you'll see always there are a whole lot of slips of paper with things that people wrote and sometimes it's a mystery what the person wants, but an awful lot of them are are just saying they really are interested in more sports facilities.
Hey, thank you.
She asked me to tell you that.
Thank you. Any other comments for Ms. Perry?
Miss Perry, Mr. Mayor, I would just um, as you listen to today's meeting, I think there's going to be a few other funding um items that come up for consideration, so maybe Amanda can get you that final list after this meeting for the H C C.
That would be wonderful. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just wanted to do a brief follow-up with the commission on the article that was in the Independent Record relative to our engineering staff, et cetera. Uh, part of that article represented that we were trying to uh retain Gold West or Development Review Processes and actually, we're in discussions with that company because of their great and engineering expertise and on public works projects, it's very important that you bring that to the to the application process. And I think we've got another meeting set up with them to try to move that along, Commissioner Dean, that has to do with many of the opportunities that you've pointed out over the the last several weeks. So I think that, you know, rather than just sit and wait for things to get better, we're trying to be proactive. On the development review side, I think you've all seen the commercials. We've actually gone through within the ability I have to adjust the salaries on engineers. We've done uh actively recruiting engineers that will assist on the development review side and I think Director Leland's here and I know that in the last couple days, he's had some very serious discussions on very qualified interested candidates and I don't know if you wanted to spend them.
Uh, Mayor Commission, yeah, that article, um, we are still doing the review in-house. There is um I don't want to say misquotes, but there's in there is that we are actually doing in-house and we're trying to do it as quickly as possible. But because of that article, we do have two engineers that have reached out to us where we are going to meet with them and one of them is uh or both of them are very qualified. One of them is a former consultant that decided to leave the consulting world and so we're hoping we can come up with something and get uh both of those individuals uh onboard, but it it ended up working a little bit in our favor um just because they saw the article and have contacted us, so hopefully we can get some uh good candidates and good people onboard.
You bet. Thank you, Director.
Are you done? Can I ask a quick question? Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and Director Leland or Manager Burton. Is this um, I I got this question and I want to make sure I get it right, but is this a short-term measure using vacancy savings to fill the gap or is this something you imagine being sort of a mainstreamed outsourcing of part of the engineering process going forward?
Uh, Mayor, I'll, I'll say that I, I think that when unprecedented times relative to the amount of grant funds that are available and throughout the entire country, whether it's government or private sector, there's challenges retaining engineering services today. Uh, so part of it's probably short-term relative to the programs that the federal government has set up. Our ability to be competitive in terms of retaining engineers right now seems to be a longer-term challenge. Uh, I do uh, I do think that we're making progress, but again uh with all of the federal money, with the whole changing dynamic of the workplace itself, the challenge does exist, but I want you to know that we're not just doing the same thing, that we're trying to respond with the tools that we have to our availability to improve the situation and I'm more encouraged this week doing those lives.
Any other comments for Manager Burton? Thank you. We're now turn this over to Opera and General Fund.
We're sorry, there's one other. I I forgot to.
Sure, go ahead, uh, Director Leader.
Mayor and Commission, uh, one other thing is we are going to be putting out another uh notice on additional infection byproducts. This is just a continuation from the one sample because of main break back in May and so unless we see anything else, this will be the last time. It's just a continuation, but I wanted didn't want you guys to be blindsided when another public notice goes out about a violation. This is disinfection byproducts. It's not an acute uh issue. It is a long-term one and working with D Q, there is nothing uh with the the water we have dropped down with the samples and everything coming forward, so it is still safe to be able to drink and this is just a long-term uh contaminant that has spiked because of one instance that we had out there, so uh we are all good. We are in compliance and so we just have to to make sure that we give this notification out.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Opera and General Savings Update, Grand Administration. Madam Op, Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Oh, um, Tim, did you want to say something before she, I thought?
Uh, I, I.
Okay, no, that's okay then.
So Mayor, I think that uh you know, the commission has gone through a lot of deliberations uh which leads us to its point, you know, we left off the discussion last time with seven major projects and some internal uh I think, I think that you're at a point where you can talk amongst yourself. Amanda's going to do a brief presentation and read off or end up where we left off last time with the the seven projects under consideration and others. And I think too, for the commissioners that responded in terms of their thought on how how to allocate the money, you should have a card, a card copy of those responses on your desk. Um, and with that, Mayor, we have a very brief presentation and then uh it's uh time for the commission to have discussion amongst yourselves.
So, but she has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Manager Burton. So, uh, just to bring everybody up to speed on where we're at in terms of what we've already allocated, so the total distribution that came from the U S Treasury was eight point four roughly million dollars. They allocated one point eight million dollars to the Ten Mile Water Project. Um, and the, an additional one point eight million dollars uh was allocated to internal projects for the Civic Center HVAC system, the CAD RMS system with uh our Public Safety Department. The Mount Helena Radio Building, which was struck by lightning and that's a project that we co-funded with the county um as well as some funding that went um to the Law and Justice Center second floor remodel. That was also a jointly funded project with the county. And then the city's ERP system, which for those in the public, that is essentially our finance and H R um system. We've allocated one point six million dollars to contingency and an additional four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars uh came from additional internal projects for the Grand Street Theater roof, a type-six wildland fire truck replacement, uh, the Centennial Trail uh repair, repair of paving and feasibility study for the Henderson pedestrian bridge. Um, as we mentioned, the type-six uh wildland fire truck that we originally allocated two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there was a partial um recovery on that vehicle after the insurance came back. Um, for the purposes of making sure we're all on the same page, I have added that two hundred thousand dollar allocation back to the coffers in full. Um, so that brings us to two point nine nine eight roughly million dollars.
And there is a, Mayor, there, there is a request in front of the commission for the.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
That's on the next line. And so we do have um internal requests and just for context, since it sounds like there was maybe some confusion with the H C C, these internal requests were brought in front of the commission uh twice before at the past two administrative meetings. Um, one is for the Memorial Park ice skating warming house study for fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, buyer has requested to retain part of that two initial two hundred thousand dollars that was allocated uh to cover uh making their new vehicle whole with new equipment. So the uh when the insurance uh came back, it was only for a new chassis, the new vehicle itself. Um, and the idea would be that then you would put the old equipment on the new truck. They're requesting thirty-seven thousand dollars for new sliding equipment for the pump and water tank and then ten thousand dollars to cover the debatable. So that's forty-seven thousand dollars total. And then a request came from the county um for an infusion of capital to cover F Y twenty-four projects that have been identified. Um, the total cost of those projects is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, so split with the county, that would be two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Um, should the commission choose to uh adjust um funding for those additional internal requests, that would bring the total to two point seven million dollars.
Amanda, I'm sorry, um I don't know who's here that can answer that question. What is that uh, uh, project for the Law and Justice Center?
So the Law and Justice Center project, and I don't believe that Troy Sampson is here, uh, but there was a uh, an audit essentially that was done on that building of projects that needed to happen within the next five years. Um, it's substantial. Uh, so the request came from the county to take a look at the projects that are already set for the F Y twenty-four capital um allocation and do an infusion of money um on the front end to make sure that those projects get done and we're on track rather than going through the regular budgeting process for those.
So you don't know the projects?
He is on.
You're right.
Is Troy online?
I don't.
Mr. Mayor, he, he is online.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to say something?
Uh, I was just going to say that working through the budgets for uh the facilities, that was part of the unfunded capital plan in this fifty-fifty split between the county and then I guess Mr. Sampson's online and he could speak to the specific projects that would be covered if he mentioned choices to go this route.
Can we have Mr. Sampson tell us?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, Troy Sampson, Facilities Department. The projects that um Amanda and Tim are referring to uh at the City County Building um for the F Y twenty-four budgets and L E D lighting upgrade.
I'm talking about the Law and Justice Center, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's also City County Building, sorry.
Well, yeah, okay.
Uh, Law Justice is the uh center elevator upgrade um and then HVAC controls. Um, installing and upgrading um smarter controls for the whole building. And then a re-roof of the nineteen seventy-two edition. Uh, so the total of those projects and an engineering study on the plumbing and domestic water supply system. Replacement of an exhaust fan and repairs to parking lot number two. Those are the only projects at Law Justice.
Thank you, sir.
Continue. Uh, we also went through an external application process. Um, you'll recall, we went through an additional L O I letter of intent or excuse me, letter of intentional slide process that resulted in well over forty applications. Um, the commission then narrowed that down to their top seven. Uh, the top seven projects were then asked to go through a full application process. Those projects um are the R Redeemers uh Housing Project brought by Rock Mountain Development Council. Uh, Family Promise brought a request for facility acquisition and improvements uh related to um uh emergency housing shelter. Food Chair made a request for their Community Food Resource Center. Carroll College uh put in a request for their for improvements to the Warren Nelson Stadium. Helena Regional Sports Association put in a request for sustainability study for a new recreation center. Uh, United Way of Wilson Clark County put in a request for mobile hygiene and meal prep units. And Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group put in a request for a wildlife risk assessment and education program. Uh, after the full application process, there was an internal staff review. Um, you'll, you've seen this before, but this was the uh findings that the, that the group came up with. Um, after their initial review, there were two top uh projects, um, the Helena Food Chair Project and the R Redeemers Project that scored uh well above the others, but all had merit first. So at this point, um, as Manager Burton stated, uh at the last commission meeting, there was discussion of bringing proposals from the commission forward um for your discussion. Uh, those that provided that in advance, you should have a hard copy of those in front of you if you have any other questions. Uh, myself and the Director Dean Center here, we're also prepped and ready to do quick math for you. So.
Thank you, uh, Madam Op, please. Comments or questions for Amanda? Well, here, permission.
Uh, could you just with your quick math skills, uh, tell me what the number is, uh, the two million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand minus forty-seven thousand for the wildland fire truck?
You're right, yeah. Well, no.
All right, two point nine five one nine. Okay, thank you.
Are you done, Commissioner?
I am done.
Okay, well the uh discussion is now with the commission.
We want to just start the topic of this and go. Can I ask a question before we do that? On process?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I have a, a question regarding process, so it was my understanding coming in that we were going to be talking about the seven projects plus the three internal. Um, and I'm, I'm a little confused because I'm seeing all sorts of stuff on here that is not part of that, so it would be helpful maybe if we started with parameters on what we're even discussing. Uh, because I feel like the.
And um yeah, if you had, uh, if I had continued, we would have gotten to that.
Cool.
So, um Amanda, we thank you for all your hard work. Manager Burton, we thank you. And so now uh it's in the hands of the commission, so um we had discussed on seven projects and um some projects were keep, uh, were put in place after the fact that uh some of us felt that were important. So what we're going to do right now, I believe, is um find a way where we have common ground. What have, what, where do we agree on these? I'm talking about the first seven right now. Because I see numbers are pretty different. And in order to come to a consensus, let's see where we have common grounds for the first seven. And then we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Turn my cards off the last time, I'll do it again.
Okay.
That's all right. So I'm just gonna basically uh I was, I gotta say, I was comfortable with the additional internal requests. The fifteen thousand dollar ice cream study, the forty-seven thousand to wildland repair, truck repair uh and the two hundred and thirty-four five for the Law and Justice since and uh City County Building upgrades, assuming the county's going to match that. So as far as the internal stuff goes on.
Okay.
So relative to the externals, uh a little different than what I threw out last time with um with the except the difference being, I think last time I said I was supported generally the R Redeemers Lutheran uh project, the Family Promise and Tri-County Fire Safe. Still comfortable with those. Um, and I'll get into the allocation. Um, but I added Helena Food Chair as well.
Would you repeat that?
So, so I'm, I'm interested in our Redeemers Lutheran Church Housing Project, Family Promise Shelter Project, the Helena Food Chair Project, Tri-County Fire Safe Project. And then I have one additional that I might as well just throw that out there right now. Um, and it's completely out of let be. And I'm comfortable with that. And it may go nowhere, but I'm going to give it a give it a go. We had uh we all know the tale of uh the Rodney Street Neighborhood in the trees that happened down there. And it's, you know, it's a tough tale um for everybody involved. And um one of the things that I've heard recently, and I don't think this will uh necessarily from their perspective, the tone for, for us to get redemption out of this. But I think it's something that can take the sting out of it. My understanding is that the plan moving forward in terms of uh the replanting of trees is pretty new. I'm not an arborist, so I don't know the terminology, but pretty new. Uh, I'll just call them saplings for lack of a better word. And my understanding is that there is uh potential to plant more mature trees. Don't have specifications on that. But the residents that I talked to, um, I said, how many trees are talking and how much per tree? We got a rough figure of a hundred and seventy-eight trees, five hundred bucks a tree. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know, but I'm just throwing this idea out there. So if we do the math on that, that's about ninety thousand dollars. If that's ac, if that's even accurate, but I think conceptually um relative to what's happened in the, in the neighborhood and relative to taking the sting out of that might be something we could do to help of that neighborhood. It's some, something to think about. So, so I'll go back to the rest of them that are more orthodox. Uh, the R Redeemers Lutheran Housing Project, and I, I won't be as windy on any of these, uh, because I think we've talked about them a lot. It's, I allocated one point seven million. Family Promise, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand. Helena Food Chair, two hundred and fifty thousand. Tri-County Fire Safe, hundred and forty-three thousand. Um, before I advocate for that, I guess I'd be interested to know whether, whether who's on the fence on that one, because I got quite a pitch for it. And I could save you the mercy of that pitch if, if people were interested in it. Otherwise, I'm going to give you the pitch.
You have the floor.
Okay, I'll go for it. So both of my professional career was spent in fire service. The last three, four years when I was in the management of the fire service for sixteen years as a, as a street level firefighter. You're focused on emergency, things that are happening day to day on the street. Um, a variety of emergencies. When I moved into management, my horizon started to broaden a little bit, a lot, actually. Again, I began to look at community risk. Also had to deal with other departments within the city, which was a new thing, good thing, um, and other agencies. But one of the things I found in assessing community risk is the greatest potential that we have I think as a community, is a wildfire that comes down and becomes an urban conflict. Not so serious. And I think money best spent. Well, I'll give you, I'll give you my story. When I moved into management, one of, one of the things our department did annually was we would take our staff into the neighborhoods that were adjacent to the timber that we're surrounded by. And we would train and pre-plan neighborhoods, drive through, think about what we do here, considerations we have there and, and so all these big fire, fire trucks driving through neighborhoods invariably you would get people coming out of their homes and saying, where's the fire, essentially? And as our management, I would peel off, let guys continue on their train. And as our management, I would peel off, let guys continue on their training. I'd peel off and talk to the neighbors. And I would explain what we're doing. To a person, the response back was. Well, we're all right. We got you guys. And that's, that's, that's a very difficult assumption for a community to have. And so that was eleven years ago. And I think, I think our citizens lack the education, what a wildfire that comes to town means to them. And I think we have to go back about six, eight months and we can still see that need exists. To this day, taking Mount Helena Fire. Saw a lot of spectators in neighborhoods that should have been. Pre- preparing their homes, their neighbors and neighborhoods for evacuation. And I just think there's, there's a significant educational deficit in our community and in what. A wildfire would mean to Helena. And one of the, one of the best ways we can spend money and save lives. Is uh, educating them on their responsibilities in, um. Back in the, in the event the mayor would order an evacuation, what that means to them, what that means to their neighbors. And that's part of what this program seeks to do in, in the process of. Um, conducting. Home risk assessments, they're gonna get that education on what their responsibility is in terms of wildfire. Ideally, our, our Helena Fire Department should be doing this, but we don't have the resources for them to do it. We don't, we, we don't have, you know, an organization or staff. That's experienced in that, that can go out and educate the community to the level that they need to be, given the fact that the entire. City of Helena is a wildland urban interface zone. And Tri County Fire Safe does. And so I, I think, thank you for your time and the soapbox. Uh, I think it's gonna be money well spent. And I would, I would really urge your support of fully funding that project. There you have it.
Thank you.
I will be fairly grateful that I might go next.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I did not factor in the internal projects with the exception of the forty-seven thousand dollars for the wildland fire truck. Because we gave it, we took it back, we give it again. Um, so that one was part of my considerations. Um, I was of the opinion that we had. I- in my mind, I had closed the internal project requests. I think we had given. I tried to figure out the math, but somewhere between five and six million dollars to internal projects. I'd like to. Leave the remaining amount for the external private, given, uh, sort of the extent of the need that we saw from the, the proposals that we received. Um, so I focused my, uh, attentions on those seven projects with the exception of the, the wired wildland fire apparatus. Um, I do think for the internal projects, I think there were some great projects. The need is always there, but to me, our budget needs to reflect our priorities. And if those are our internal priorities, our budget should reflect that and we should budget for those in the normal budget process. I get that there's always a shortfall. Uh, but it is my opinion that these ARPA funds are a chance to make a transformative impact. On our community for things that we cannot normally fund, that are not normally part of our budget process. Uh, with that, I allocated two point two million dollars to the RMDC, our Redeemers Project. I think that project. Is, uh, an absolutely phenomenal example of what a community can do. Um, I think the need for affordable housing, we hear it in all the ways, uh, including last night at the joint commission meeting. Uh, with that presentation from the Housing Navigator, I think the need is tremendous. I think this project is fantastic and I am all in, uh, for supporting that in any way that we can. Uh, I allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Helena Food Chair Project. I think that project is well on its way. I think it's a sustainable project. It is a high need in our community. Um, and as I was looking at these, I sort of used the Maslow's, uh, hierarchy of needs, really like. What is the biggest need in our community and how can we make the biggest impact? Uh, my third was a little bit, uh, a little left field, if I may quote Commissioner Logan. Um, I believe there is a profound need for emergency shelter in our community. I did not think the proposal we received was viable. In its current format. So I would recommend taking three hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Putting a placeholder in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and looking at that issue and how we can best address it using those funds. Whether it's, um, working with the existing proposal, uh, to move it forward a bit, but I think. Given the fact that there is no actual site to be used yet, I think we're not quite there yet on that proposal, but the need is high. Um, my math was off, I was a little low, so I am more than happy to consider the Tri County Fire proposal at a hundred and forty-three thousand as well. Because my total was a little below the amount we actually have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you want to go ahead?
Okay.
Um, so. My spreadsheet, um, I broke mine into kind of the three sections, as you'll see on here. One. The, um, community projects that, um. Were the, the seven that, that made it to the expanded, um. Application process, um, city projects and then in other. Um, and those were two of them that were in our original, um. Uh, letter of intent group that I think deserve a second look, um. If it goes nowhere, you know, fine, but I think that they, I think that they are, it's important enough that they should deserve another look. Um, so on the, I think what I'll do is I'll start with the city projects. Um, and. This is gonna come as no surprise. I, um, fully support the fifteen thousand for the warming hut. Um, study, um, the structure right now is not usable. It's normally in the past where K's kids would go. Um, but it, it's not safe for them to be there, um, K's kids, I, and I'll talk about this a little bit later. Hugely important, um, in the summertime, especially for a place for kids to have programmed activities and, um. Childcare, um, and so I think that. It's be, it's more than just the ice rink. It is really a year-round facility that we need to get up to snuff, um, sooner rather than later. Um, also underneath that, I included four hundred thousand dollars for the installation of a new surface and a chiller for. The ice rink, um, and there is a meeting that's scheduled, um, with Doug Smith, our Parks Director. Um, next week, I think, um, to talk about that facility, um. I think that this, in terms of the ice rink there, it's more than just a sheet of ice, um, in my opinion. Um, I, we have huge community use of it already, literally thousands and thousands of people. And that want to be there, but we cannot use it throughout the entire season because. Um, well, I mean, part of it is climate change. Um, we can't be open a lot of days because the, the surface is not able to stay cold, um. We're not able to facilitate the thousands of, um, people who, who want to be using it, um, not to mention those. That are literally hundreds in the user groups of hockey and curling, um. By pouring a surface, we'd also be able to start using it in the summertime for. Three-on-three basketball. We have a really robust roller derby group in town that would be able to use it. Um, and it would be more than just, um, a oval of, of dirt like it is right now in the summer. Where I think that this is a lot bigger than just a nice rink. Um, it is one of those few activities in the wintertime. That, um, kids of all backgrounds get to enjoy. If you, and I think there's a lot of folks that can probably relate to this. If you grew up and your family couldn't necessarily afford skiing, except for when you did the class trips. Um, ice skating is one of those few activities that you get to enjoy. In the wintertime, and I think it's really important that we do our best to provide those type of opportunities for kids, um. I'll be brief, but like the data in Lewis and Clark County is not great, um, in terms of mental wellness of, of young people. Forty-two percent in, well, so the youth risk behavior survey, um, it's done every year, um, and. Our statistics locally, um, have just gotten worse and worse. Forty-two percent of, um, young people felt sad or helpless. For two or more weeks in a row in the preceding twelve months of when the survey was taken. Twenty-five percent seriously considered attempting suicide, fourteen point three percent actually attempted suicide. And I think it goes without saying, y'all know we feel better when we go outside and get fresh air, but there is more than enough data to support that, um. There's actually been a number of studies about, um, the decline in young people being, uh, participating in outdoor recreation. Um, and, and the direct impact on their mental health, um. I will send out an article, but there's a really great article that actually our own Jim Robbins, who lives here in Helena, published in. Um, Yale Environment Three Sixty about the impact of being outdoors on, um, your everyday lives and the role of, um. Of being outside, uh, um, as a public health policy issue, um. So not only is it good for more kids to be getting outside and having an activity, but I also think that we'll be fitting, uh, filling a need. That, um, we see every year, there's a huge demand for it and, and we don't have the facility to support it. So that's my pitch for the ice rink. Um, I allocated fifty thousand dollars to expand K's kids. This was, um, in their original request. Um, I think that it's one of those that I think falls under city projects because. Um, it is a partner with the city in terms of, um, our Parks and Rec facility, um. Planning, um, and also will help address the. Just, uh, worsening childcare needs that we're seeing it's, um. And it's something that I think we can do our part in helping facilitate more kids to participate, um. I also would like to see, um, if we can, this is not nearly their full request, but I would like to see if we could get a hundred thousand dollars. To Exploration Works. City is a part owner of the building and we have a vested interest in ensuring that it's able to. Provide, um, the programming necessary, um, to fulfill its mission. And then my final piece in the city projects is adding a hundred thousand dollars to the solar loan revolving fund. I think this is a really great opportunity for, um, us to help expand that program. Um, particularly given that there are additional federal credits, it'll make it more. More easily available, um, to households that. Um, maybe the, the specific interest lo- loan was not going to be sufficient, but this will help them. Get to that place where they can apply for it and, um, we can have more homes that have solar arrays. Um, moving on to the, um. The outside projects, I would really like us to, um, at least partially fund. All of the seven, um, I think that they all were more than valid. Um, and, and really will have impact in our community, um. I'm just gonna go, my order on here is different than up there, so I'm just gonna fill out my spreadsheet. Um, I had four hundred and forty thousand dollars to Family Promise, um. I think that's an important part of the housing continuum, um. Commissioner Reed, I would agree that I think that parts of the plan need to be more flushed out, but I also think this gives us an opportunity to start somewhere. Um, and, and, um, continue moving from there. Um, second is Helena Food Chair, two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Helena Regional Sports Authority Sustainability Study, um, I actually funded that at fifty-one thousand nine hundred. Um, and that's to make my math work. They had, they had requested sixty-four thousand. There's. A just a huge demand for sports facilities and it is only gonna continue to get worse. Um, and we really, uh, that's not necessarily an issue that, um. Folks outside of the city can do a lot to address, but this is a partner that will help us get there. Um, the R Redeemers Lutheran Church Housing Project, um, I have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. Um, one thing that I think will be really helpful is that we do have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars, so I think this gives them an opportunity to. Should we allocate the money to leverage, um, that for additional dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Um, obviously a huge project that's gonna take a while, but, um, I think that this will give us. An opportunity to be part of it, um, and I'm really hoping that the county, I know they were kind of wishy-washy yesterday, but would really love to see them. Participate, um, in, in that project as well. Um, the Tri County Fire Safe Working Group, a hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, United Way Meal and Hygiene Mobile Units, um, that request was four hundred thousand and I have it marked for three hundred thousand. Um, that is one of those things that I think, um, we don't really think about until you're in an emergency or until you can. Are going without a shower, um, or a place to prepare any type of food and, um, something that I think we. We should be supporting. Um, and then the final piece is, um, Carroll College Nelson Stadium. I have a hundred thousand dollars marked. I'm happy to talk about that one. I do think that we. This, this goes back to the sports facility conversation. There have been, I think, four new. Lacrosse teams, um, from, I think, the middle schools that have started, that need space that our Parks Department cannot facilitate. Um, I think this opens the door for us to be a more engaged partner with Carroll and getting access to a facility that we. Haven't been able to access, um, also we'll be able to finally hopefully get a shrine game here. Um, which is hugely important to, um, I mean, they bring quite a bit of money when you bring in a shrine game. Um. The shrine game, it's, oh, it's the, it's the East versus West football game. It's like a pro bowl. It's a big deal for high school football, um, but folks come from all over the state for, and you'd always. Seems to get it, um, and it's very time, but it brings in tons of money and, um, also great opportunity to. Show the state, um, what it's like to be part of, um, the Helena community. Um, moving on to the other piece, um, there are two here that were in our original. Um, letters of intent. The first one is the Last Chance Powwow Demonstration Day. They only requested two thousand dollars. I think that's a really easy thing for us to fund that would be hugely important to a group that, um. And if you've never been to the Last Chance Powwow, I would highly suggest that you go, because it is a really great experience, but I think that is something that. That is an easy lift for us, um, and, and I would hope that we'd be able to support it. Um, and then the final one is Peer View Health Center. Um, they had originally asked for four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Um, I'm requesting that we fund a hundred and fifty thousand. Most of their proposal was to help support, um. Staffing for mental health needs of vulnerable populations, um, if we want to talk about like root causes. Um, of, of the root causes that perpetuate cycles. We have to deal with mental health issues and you're never gonna be able to improve your life outcomes if you are not healthy. Um, physically, mentally and otherwise, um, and so I'd hope that we would maybe be able to consider that funding request. And with that, that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I was in favor of the truck too.
I just said thank you, and then you added.
I just wanted to make sure that that.
Okay.
Commissioner. Uh, well, thanks to staff real quick, uh. Thank you, Ms. Opens. Thank you, Ms. Danielson. Thank you, Manager Burton. Um, the work you put into this and the rest of the staff that has gone through the scoring of all these projects and taken in the. The, uh, applications, the letters of interest. Thank you very much. Um, I, when we started down this road, I started to think about what ARPA was meant for. American Rescue Plan Act, and it was meant to help. Communities and states recover, and this is something that, uh, I try to keep in mind, and I know we did when we narrowed it down to our four points. It was originally two or three, now it's four. Um, we received forty-three letters of intent, letters of interest from forty-one different nonprofit, some are here in this, in this room today. Some are watching online, uh, to the total of fifteen point seven million dollars in requests. That there's a lot of need out there. I know Commissioner Logan brings this up a lot, there's a lot of need. And in the next year, we don't have ARPA to deal with. We just, it's, uh, we don't get that influx from the federal government, so. I think where we're at is with our two point nine nine million. I think where we're at is with our two point nine nine million. Think we need to make the most of this moment that we're in right now. It's a, it's a chance for us to make an impact. It's a chance for us to lead. As a community, it's a time for us to lead by example and. Our, it's not just our community that's facing these housing issues, it's our county, it's our state, it's our entire nation and. Whether it's housing, workforce, childcare, these three things rely on one another. I've mentioned this in every meeting that. It's a wants versus needs uh discussion that we're having right now and um. Question I think we have to ask ourselves is what kind of community do we wanna be? And how do you wanna lead by example? And you know what? Out of these seven, um I looked at, how do we fund all these, you know, it was. It's funny, if you ask anybody, say you have two point nine nine million dollars, almost three million dollars burning a hole in your pocket, you'd be like, gee, this is kinda nice, but then you realize. Level scheme, things not enough. And how do we make the most of it at this moment? Whether it's all seven or all forty-three or forty-three plus the three that we've had. I looked at two million dollars for our redeemers. I think, I think that is a incredible effort, monumental effort to. Fix our housing uh to help out, because when you've heard the statistics, we heard it last night from Ann McCauley, we heard it from. Our uh um the folks at Good Sam's, we've heard it from our school superintendent, kids are sleeping in their cars. Their parents' cars, they're couch surfing. There's something that we can do that is meaningful. Over the last three years, we've had an influx of Montanans, according to MSU Extension Center that has done presentations. We we brought in enough people to get another congressional district, but we had the same amount of housing and. The groups that are at the table right now, whether it's the YWCA Habitat for Humanity, um our Redeemers. Food Share, et cetera, all working on this to make a transformational moment. Where we can make a difference in people's lives. And uh I think when it goes to mental health, at least knowing where people have a a place to go at night, especially their kids. I think it's is important. Um, when it comes to the Helena Food Share. I think there's a critical need of that opportunity to volunteer there. I think that we can help them get this off the ground, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I wanna fund that fully. Um, when it comes to the sports, uh the regional sports authority, I've had conversations with them. Looking at, you know, you know, looking at the rec center, um I'd like to do fifty thousand at least. I think that that's something that. We need to um, I think there's opportunities, Billings is building theirs. Kalispell's eyeballing theirs. We have the opportunity to do something that can bring sports teams, events um. Uh, opportunity here to be the sports hub for the state. The Tri-County Fire Safe, I I think that, you know, fires, I had the opportunity, I'm on the Red Cross for the Lucy Park Disaster Action Team. Had the opportunity to watch our fire chief and our team. Coordinate with the DNRC, uh coordinate with uh our Helena um uh. Fire District and the to watch them, oh, National Force, excuse me, to watch them work together was incredible. But then also too, we saw the people standing on tops of the roofs watching. And you had neighbors standing outside, not quite sure what to do, and I think that's something that we need to fund. I'm open to that, but um I put a hundred thousand on that one and then. I've looked at fifty to a hundred thousand, I'm interested in that. Family Promise, I'm interested in having the discussion there um. I like Commissioner Reed's proposal, I think that that warrants a discussion. War Nelson Stadium. I've uh uh I think that we we partially fund some of these, I think, you know, um. I'm on the low end with this one, uh considering the resources that they have, considering the amount of people they have to make this work. Um, I do understand the opportunity for Friday Night Lights or the Shrine Game. Um, again, I'm on the low end with that one, uh with fifty thousand dollars. And then with uh hygiene and food prep, again, the Red Cross has a food truck that can help. I've talked to other food trucks who said that they would help out in the need if there was a need, but also too uh. What I've understood is that they might not have it in mind, they don't have a place to put it or to be able to maintain it, and so. I I I've struggled with that one. I do love what United Way does. I've worked with them on their move the dial discussions about housing. I'm looking at a hundred thousand for them. But if, when we're talking about the Memorial uh the Memorial Park Hut, uh I'm good with fifteen thousand. I know I've received phone calls and emails. Uh, Director Smith and I have talked about this, Manager Burton and I have talked about the the hut. I even proposed in one of the meetings to not even charge people during, while we're trying to get it fixed, you know, it's a like, hey. We don't have a bathroom, it's not working, let's just not charge folks, let's not do that with the kids right now, especially during the coldest times of the year. To go ice skate um. So I'm I'm good with fifteen thousand to kinda look at fixing that. The fire truck, absolutely, we have to do our part with the. With our county and state partners when it comes to fires, whether it's the Spokane Hills or Mount Helena. Um, that truck can do its part. Um, I'm good with forty-seven thousand, but when it comes to the Law and Justice Center. I I I think we need a a larger discussion, I think that that could be used uh as a part of the budget discussion that we're having. Um, but if we're gonna look at all forty-three, I've got a list of allocating some money. To thirty-some projects, not to the team that I know, we talked about this, Commissioner Reed and I did of not, you know, not small. Small amounts, we're talking fifty thousand dollars where we can really make an impact, but I think tonight, I think we need to look at. Some of the big things that we could do to make an impact and um. I'm I'm willing to have the discussion about additional projects. I do like the idea of of experts. Um, given them so many case kids, of course, um. Uh, I wrote something down here, I can't read my writing, but I do like Commissioner Logan's idea about making the folks uh. Kinda sock them a blow, but not, we can't fix what we've done on Rodney Street, and so finding a way to make it right and uh. I think right now it's a transformational moment, we've used that word a few times in these meetings, and I think to make the biggest impact. We need to focus on the challenges at hand, which are housing, childcare, in workforce. No, we don't build houses, no, we don't offer childcare, no, we don't, you know, do workforce, but the thing is, is that the experts around the state. That are that are looking at this, their eyes on us right now, and I think to get this right. To look at things that are wants versus needs, which remind, I wanted my budget to move. For my proposals, the proposals I've handed, my choices to reflect that. But I appreciate this op- opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Logan, you brought in um.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh.
Sorry, can I ask a clarifying question from Commissioner uh?
Please.
I didn't get the amount that you wanted to allocate for the family funds.
I put, I've got a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
You you spoke about Rodney Street?
I did.
No, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to. You spoke about Rodney Street, but your numbers were not. Sure, you were not sure about the numbers and uh.
This conceptually within the last few days, so.
And I think it's a, it's a great idea, but I'm not gonna go forward personally until I get some numbers.
Sure.
Maybe we can get some clarification sometime, because the last time we had the Rodney discussion, it was my understanding that we were going to use more mature trees.
Well, you know what? No, let let's stop right here. This is my time now, so let me discuss after that, we can go back to whatever else we need to discuss. So, I just brought it up because you brought that and I just wanna go, let let's keep this. On the the agenda moving. So uh, yes, we uh decided on seven projects and um. I thought those projects were very important and uh and that's why we uh we we came to those seven projects, so. They all needed our attention and I decided to give all of them our attention through my allocation. And because my allocation still has some outstanding. I uh discussed with Commissioner Dean and some projects were pretty simple to wrap. Wrap my head around, like the Powwow. It was two thousand dollars. I will support that two thousand dollars. I don't have a problem with that. And Exploration Works, cause it's part of our and um. Our, we're responsible for it, it's our property, I'll support some going towards Exploration Works in the amount of seventy-five thousand. And then when we talk about the seven projects, I allocated uh our Redeemers and we are fully aware that um. I don't think anyone in this hall is not aware that housing is an issue. And we need to look into it. However, there are other issues too, also, and I uh also went down the list with the seven and allocated for all seven. Our Redeemer Housing Project, I allocated nine hundred thousand. Helena Food Share, I allocated the the amount, two hundred and fifty. The Tri-County Working Group, I see um, I have put in two thou- two hundred thousand, but I see there that. Their allocation is a hundred and forty-three, I support the hundred and forty-three. The United Way Mobile Unit, three hundred thousand, Carroll College, a hundred and fifty thousand. Family Promise, three hundred and fifty thousand. I also supported the Helena Regional Sports Complex with the sixty-four thousand. They asked for, they asked for. And then I went further to go on the ice rink. The ice rink, we should fully support the um, this this study. The study for the warming building, the fifteen thousand, I would fully support it. And um. I listened to Commissioner Dean when she spoke about the K kids, you know. They're our kids. I know my kids were uh participants to that program. They went to that park, they played at that uh thing, so I was looking to also support the K's kid program. And um. Ms. Perry, when she said that they have a. Box out there for people to go in and she was clinched, and that's why I asked her, I said, hey, um. How many? She said a lot, she didn't give me any numbers, but we see that people are really looking forward to um. Sports. And that's why, and because of that, I decided to support the two sporting events, uh the two sporting projects. So when I heard from Carol stating that there will be at least twenty-three additional. I started calculating in my mind, twenty-three additional sports event would happen at their stadium. I thought about immediately our hotels getting filled up, our restaurants getting filled up. And uh, all the other things that come with sporting events, and so I know it was gonna bring uh uh the economy. To our city was gonna benefit from it. To seem as the um. The sporting complex studies, so I fully support that. And um, did I go over the seven, ma'am?
Oh, Mayor, thank you. Um, you mentioned case kits, but you didn't mention a dollar.
Yes, I don't have a dollar amount, and I thought I had it, but then when I'm looking at my stuff, yeah, I need a dog too.
And you've indicated in the um, in the memo that you also had supported the solar loan program.
Yes, and I didn't have the the dollar amount for that also. So yes, that's where I stand. Hey, I know what I'm doing, man. So um, at this time, um. I really don't know next steps. I'll turn over to Manager Burton.
So I've been listening to the discussion here and commissioner. Consider this discussion can kind of be a transition from staff work to a comprehensive resting and. Mayor and report to issues. One suggestion I have, and you can build off it. Is that we take this information that's now the commission. Uh, and we organize it so that you can compare project to project commissioner by commissioner and mayor. And then also have it where there would be differences with each of the five of you. Uh, and we can present that information back that might help you have uh a further discussion. On how to allocate the million dollars. That would come forward, I think, as a part of the the next administrative meeting.
Okay.
One thing.
Well, well, I think she had a hand up. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Manager Burton. I am uh mindful that this process has been going on for a very, very long time and mindful of the partners, some of whom you. Can't move forward until they know what we are going to do, so I'm wondering if we can split the difference. Um, it seemed that there were one or two projects that had five people recommending funding. And if there's a way to do what we've been doing in the past, which is to say, make some decisions on some projects now. And keep moving forward rather than holding up the entire process while we try to find consensus, cause I heard, I mean, there's, we're all over the place in a lot of ways. But I think there were two projects that I heard that had three. Three projects that were recommended by all five commissioners with varying amounts, so if we can find a way to. Focus on those three projects, find some consensus on funding amounts and move from there. That would be a way um to to get some traction, maybe get a couple of things off the ground and work through the rest as we go. That would be my suggestion.
Commission.
Um, I'm okay with that. I want, what I was just going to know is that maybe, and I know she was having it all. Writing down, I can see. Um, I think it'd be helpful if we could post. Those that it to our website so that the community has an opportunity to see the full. List or discussion that we've had here prior to our next conversations.
Thank you. So um. Please.
Question for Commissioner Reed, you've probably taken better notes than I. So the top, the three that there was five were.
Our Redeemers, Tri-County and Food Share appeared to, and Family Promise was, that was a little shaky for me on whether or not it would be funding that proposal. Or discussing options, so I didn't include that in the, there's consensus, but those three appeared to have all five. Members indicating that they would like to fund it at some amount.
So I'm comfortable.
Okay, well, um. I wanted to hear from the community and then we can continue, cause I know some of you are talking about leaving so and so.
It's fair. Also too, with those three, would it be okay if we discussed the three in general as well, or is it, or you wanna have that another day?
There was less, from what I heard, there was not universal consensus, except the Wildland Fire Truck at forty-seven.
Thank you.
Universal. And then I'm happy to listen.
Okay, so um, well, at this time, I wanna hear from the community. And then we'll continue. So um, to remind you, you have two minutes. The floor is open for public comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just before we go to public comments, um, just a couple of things for the commission to even finish you before. Um, there was an initial parameter on the application, the spending um. Be made uh by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so it's something to keep in mind as you're partially funding. Uh, potential projects. Um, additionally, for some of the smaller requests, I did wanna remind the commission that there is a standing. Um, pot of money that goes to the Helena Area Community Foundation, that's made available for smaller grant amounts. So it's just something for you to keep.
Thank you. The floor is open for public comments, if you have any. I don't see any, madam, oh. Okay, um, just wait one minute, let them set that clock, we gotta be on. No, go ahead, um, just sit up there until they can. Can you see that clock?
I can, yeah.
Okay, for now, technical difficulties.
I swear it was working, it really was, I watched it.
I can time myself like the speech and debate tournaments.
Yeah, sure, you got it.
Yeah, uh, obviously, I wanna say thank you to everyone for all your work on all this process. My name is Max Crowe, I live about nine blocks away. Um, and uh, I I also wanted to say thank you to United States Senator John Tester, who is the only member of the Montana Congressional Delegation. To support the American Rescue uh Plan, so uh, I'm glad we're having this conversation today and thank you. Uh, I'm glad we're having this conversation today, and thank you to Senator Tester for that. Uh, I wanted to lodge public comment in support of the Our Redeemers Project um at the full amount. Uh, I think we all know that there's a great public uh housing crisis that exists uh or affordable housing crisis that exists here in Helena across the entire state. Uh, I'm a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity. Commissioner Shirlift can uh attest that I do not fall off a roof while balancing a nail gun. Um, but have come close to a couple of project sites. Uh, so we all know the difficulties the community is facing. Um, I think that this opportunity is one to get it right and to move forward on a path that makes sure that this community is one that. Doesn't become something that's only available to those who can afford it. Uh, we have to build more houses. Businesses in our community are struggling because there's not enough housing for people to work um at jobs, particularly in hourly wages. Um, so I'd lodge my support for the full funding for that project, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You have the floor, sir. You starting? Go on. No, we're using mine. So I share my yours.
What have I lost?
Um.
Uh, on Sixth Street. Um. I also would like to thank Senators Hester for allocating these funds to make Montana better. Not just rebuild, but uh take us to a better place, and I want to thank all five of you for. Your thoughtfulness on all these projects. I was here in December when we first started this discussion and. Uh, I'm excited to move forward on a lot of this. Um. I think um. We as a community. Uh, are at a turning point. We are the center of Montana. We've seen what happens in Eastern Montana, and we try hard to keep those communities alive, and we've seen what happened in Bozeman, Missoula. And. We can't become that. I just moved out of Bozeman for that reason, can't afford to live there. Um. I don't want that to happen here. Uh, I kind of like this place. It's grown on me. This is my second time living in Helena. Um. And I think it has a lot of potential uh to not go where Bozeman's gone, so I think. We really do need to invest in making the supply of housing grow. So we can bring down a two thousand dollar apartment, maybe. If there's other houses, people living in their cars have options. Uh, to maybe move into the cheap place I currently live in, and I can move up. Um, but. I also would like to say I spoke to.
You got twenty-nine sec- twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-five seconds.
I also uh spoke to um Democratic Minority Leader Kim Abbott. She said she emailed you guys as well as. Helena Representative Laura Smith said she emailed you as well about supporting. Two million dollars for our redeemers, which I support uh on the other projects. I don't have a lot. They're great, and I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir. Any others? That was your timer.
Um, I'm Teal Young. I am Nathan's partner, so we both live on Sixth Street together. Um, and I too am a recent transplant from Bozeman. Again, the reasoning is because I simply can't afford the housing in Bozeman. Uh, we literally searched for apartments for months. We're two, like thirty-something professionals. We should be able to do it, but we can't. Um, so. I want to speak in support of our our Redeemer Project. Um, I. You know, coming from Bozeman, I've seen what can happen when a population isn't supporting its working population. Um, literally Bozeman's. Economy seems like it's about to just implode because there are so many people who have wonderful ideas, who have great productive businesses that. Um, make amazing contributions. To Montana and to the world, and they don't have the people to employ them like, or to. Run them like at the working class level. Uh, we literally have businesses in Bozeman that. Will just spontaneously say, hey, we're closed today. Nobody's available available to work. Um, I don't want that for Helena. Um. And just while we were sitting there, because I actually didn't know all the information about the um unhoused. Population in Montana. Did you know that we have three percent of the population of Montana in this city? But eight point five percent of the homeless population? I feel like this city should be a model for Montana as a capital, and I want us to do better. Um, I believe that we can. I think that the two million dollars to the Our Redeemer Fund. Um, I think that can make a huge impact. And um frankly, again, back to Linda's comments about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, I firmly support. That line of thinking. I wish you had a poster in here at all times.
Three seconds.
Okay, um, because housing is a need, sports facilities are not.
Sorry.
I mean. Okay, you want it?
Any others? Yes.
Thank you. Again, I'll just join my thanks with everybody else for just gathering all the work you've done. Um, as I was listening to your conversation, I'm Kim Gardner. I'm the Clinical Director of the Substance Use Treatment Center, Mental Health Center at the Y W C A. Where we provide treatment and housing for homeless women engaged in. All kinds of stages of life or recovery and their children. Twenty-four women, seventeen children. Um, at any given time, I I think there's an extremely huge risk of underfunding. The request for the Our Redeemers Project, if you do it poorly or you don't do it well. Um, it's not going to actualize what we are trying to do in in our community. One of the thing comments I thought about is that. Yeah, um, I love sports too. I'm a graduate of Carroll, had kids that played sports. None of these kids we're talking about that are living in cars, they're not able to play sports. They're not going to be the ones that are going to be able to take part in those activities. And those parents that have the resources to take part in sports already are. We're talking about all of these families that don't have that, and and these three agencies that are collaborating together. Is a real huge message to our community. It's not just the city. It's not just Rocky Mountain over the wire or Habitat. It's all of these people coming together, owning the problem and working together. That's what we want as a community. It's like everybody's problem. There are families and our kids. So I would be worried about that. I would also advise you anytime that you consider. Um, funding, I heard a comment about Pureview. Um, I love Pureview. A lot of our residents use it. It's a great place. They actually receive almost double the reimbursement rate for the same exact service that we provide. I'll just tell you, like a therapist that does a licensed therapist, duly licensed, one hour therapy, we get ninety dollars. They get almost a hundred and eighty for the same service. They have the capacity ability. To raise their own money, so before you entertain funding other things, please check with that and make fun themselves.
Thank you. Yeah, people know. You can start now.
Happy International Women's Day. My name is Jen Gersky, and I'm the Executive Director of Y W C A Helena. Each and every one of my representatives, I am represented as a citizen of Helena and as a resident that lives on Broadway, this side of the Capitol. I think I can speak to both sides of my identity that I'm deeply concerned that my family has been attempting to purchase a house for two years. And the housing stock has been denied for our potential. It's okay, we settled in nicely to the Jefferson School District. In fact, Mayor, my daughter was sick and couldn't attend the Girl Scout meeting you were at yesterday. But I promise you, without my prompting, she had a question for you. And her question was, why do people live in cars and why do they have to freeze to death? Can't we build houses? And I promise you that kids know. As a former student body president of the University of Montana, I can solidly say that the Washington Grizzly Stadium was privately funded. And that this body is considering public funding for a private stadium on a private Catholic college is absurd. It's beyond what I believe voters can comprehend, and I don't think it's been actually publicized, or else you would have a lot more in attendance tonight. As a professional who has earned her keep in housing, poverty, women's rights, and the arena for mental health. I have to say that I'm at odds with the seemingly lack of knowledge of how housing affects our workforce development. Our economic development and our quality of life. And the things mentioned like mental health, youth suicide rates, and other determinants of health are all based on housing first. Which is indeed an effort made by the very federal government that appropriated these funds. How can we say that we are worried about children's mental health when we refuse to fund the basic social determinant of health and housing? How can we say that we desire economic development when we refuse to fund the first step in workforce development, and that's housing? The proposal before you for our redeemers was a collaboration between four different nonprofit groups. We decided as a group because we are continually begged to collaborate on projects to join as stakeholders, and we did, just as you asked. We need all of that housing continuum. I stand here today saying that six hundred thousand dollars in new construction is needed. I'll support it. But I'm gonna leave you with this. Two hundred eighty-four kids recognized by the schools as homeless.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others?
Amy T. Garden with Tri County Fire Safe Working Group, and. I would just like to say it's been very um encouraging to hear the discussion today. Um, just take a look at what the Parks Department did this week in burning the piles on Mount Helena. And as demonstrated in last summer's fire on Mount Helena. When the flames, but excuse me, when the flames hit. The area of the mountain where mitigation had been conducted. That's where the fire slowed down. If, excuse me, got onto the forest floor where it could be safely managed. Next time, we may not be so lucky. And. We don't want to compound our housing crisis by losing homes that are already here. If we receive this funding. We are committed to making. We are committed to helping Helena make itself a fire-adapted community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others?
Charlie Gross, Director of Athletics at Carroll College. And um. This has been a very enlightening process. Thank you for the consideration for the past few months. We feel we are a valued partner of the community. We continue to want to collaborate with the community. We don't want to politicize. This process. We continue to want to enhance. What this community is for all the constituents of the community. And we thank you for your diversity in thinking of different ways to use these dollars. To positively impact the community for all. And at no time do we want to be competitive and degrading. And um pitting one entity against the other. We wish you well in your process to continue to figure out how to allocate these funds. For the best well-being of the future of Helena. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, uh Commissioners, I do have uh two hands raised online. The first is Jacob Coons.
You have the floor, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Jacob Coons, I'm the Executive Director of Helena Area Habits Act for Humanity. Um, thank you for taking my public comment tonight. I wanted to thank the uh volunteer for Habitat who spoke earlier. I didn't catch their name. Uh, but for not falling off our roofs. I I really appreciate that. Um. Housing, I I mean, we we could say this all the time, housing is a critical need in Helena. Uh, these dollars that are at the table are more than a regular budget cycle. Um, how you allocate these are a message of the values of Helena and what Helena values. As a core and fundamental need for the citizens of this community. Uh, the Our Redeemers Lutheran Church Project offers you the opportunity to create. An investment in the future of Helena that is a permanent investment in families, in individuals, in businesses. Stabilizing people uh for time to come. Uh, it talks of, it it's going to kickstart a, the housing that is going to be necessary. It's it's a start. Of of the housing. It's not the full housing, but it's absolutely necessary for what's to come. Uh, so this is more than just a simple budgetary project. Uh, our our work here in in building these homes are critical. To the vitality of Helena and how you vote on these dollars and how they're at, how they're allocated in this community is going to be critically important. Uh, homes are where jobs go to sleep at night. Homes are the fundamental and the core root of issue to mental health issues. Um, as we hear talking about, uh, there are a lot of projects. There's a lot of worthy projects out there. What is the most critical need within this community and how are these dollars best spent? For the longest benefit for this community. I'd ask you to think about that as you're considering this allocation. I I would argue that Our Redeemers Lutheran Church Project, housing that is permanently affordable is the best use of these dollars. Please consider a meaningful impactful dollar amount in the allocation of the ARPA dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, next I have Renee Bauer.
You have the floor, Renee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Um, as of today, we have twenty-six families. Living in cars who are on our waitlist because we don't have shelter spots for them. Our plan was began about two years ago, and our proposal was submitted to the council last fall. Since that time, we have continued in uh finalizing our plan and in making more details available. Uh, we have not been asked for any kind of amendment or provided any opportunity to let you folks know or share with you. That we actually do have more firm plans and more things underway, so um. Just wanted to put that out there. Um, we also are partners in our plan with Good Samaritan Ministries. Uh, we think that emergency shelter in this community is very lacking and is a necessary thing. Um, proven simply by our head count today, twenty-six families living in cars. And those are just the ones that have applied for Family Promise. Thank you.
Uh, Renee, for the record, would you please tell us where you, uh, which organization?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm the Executive Director of Family Promise of Greater Helena.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other hands raised online.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I know Commissioner Reed has suggested that we look at the top three. And then we can and move forward with that. So. What are we looking at, Commissioners? And and well, the top three were Our Redeemer Housing Project, the Tri County. Well, I I don't know if we, we can even, I mean, all of us decided on funding the Tri County, right? I'm, I don't think anybody wants, so there's no discussion there. Unless you have something else you want to put in there. Commissioner.
I could do it all right, but no.
No, what I'm saying is that the top three. We all agreed to fund the. Tri County, so I don't think there's discussion.
I think uh. Four of us were prepared to fully fund them.
Yeah, and that's what I said.
Yeah. I got like that money to that too.
Who was the?
Commissioner. Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
Two hundred and forty-three, we can change that.
Okay. So the the next one was uh, what 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 was the next one? Food Share. Let's discuss food share. Where are we with that? To fully fund Food Share would be two fifty K. That's what they asked for. Where are you with that?
I have two fifty. I don't recall, is, did Commissioner Reed also have two fifty?
No.
She had two hundred and fifty thousand for Food Share.
Okay, so. Where are you with that, Commissioner?
I have two fifty.
And you?
Two fifty.
Okay, so it's unanimous, so yeah. So now it's our Redeemer uh Housing Project. Where are we?
I think all all of us were supportive of funding it.
Right.
I think it was just the varying dollar amounts.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So what was Commissioner Reed, fully?
He said two point two, I think.
And I, so when I made my original list, I had a million. And then I moved it to put more into Family Promise. Um. I think, I mean, I'd be willing to move it up if that's.
To what?
Worth. To a a million, if that's, because I think you were at one point two.
One point seven.
One point seven.
That's where I was.
And the mayor, you were.
I was at nine hundred, so um. I'm comfortable moving it to a million too, also. So if we uh. Oh, you said one point seven.
I am, and so is Sheera. Do you want me to read to you? So we are at Food Share, two hundred. So we are at Food Share, two hundred and fifty thousand. Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, a hundred and forty-three thousand. And um Our Redeemers, one million.
What did you say?
I said two million.
So, Our Redeemer, we have, uh. We're scattered, so to speak, on that. And so let's try to use the consensus method and see what. Who can get to it. If you average that, or will be the.
Or.
Our Redeemer, yeah. Put it on average. Um, but I can, I can safely do that, the average.
But I think.
Where are you?
I'll just voice, I mean, if I might briefly.
Please, go ahead.
So part of my thinking, I think this is a really critical project. We are obviously a smaller part of it. I don't, I mean, everyone is supportive of it, everyone knows that it's important. I do, it is one of the few projects in here that will be. I think it's actually probably the only project, except for maybe Family Promise, that's eligible for the. Affordable Housing Trust Fund Dollars, which we have two point three. I think in, two point two.
Yeah.
Um, will be two point three after this budget cycle. Um. So I think, I mean, I. And I fully expect, I would hope, I, that they will be applying. Um. Because that's why we have the money there, so that's, um, some of my thought process is making sure that we can fund some of these other projects. In addition to, um, when I went through, I think the land purchases. It's one. Actually, I do, it's one point three million was the land purchase, um, when I was reviewing the documents this weekend. Um, and that one point four would get them to the land purchase. I also really would love for the county to. Get involved because this is not just a city project.
Where are you?
I can do one point four.
Okay.
So there. Clearly, I can.
And so, yeah, uh, so after the average, I think I'm comfortable with that also, I can go up to. Whatever you had there.
Excuse me, mayor. So when I looked at the original average, I had Commissioner Logan at one point seven. Commissioner Reed at two point two. Um, with the mayor and, um, Commissioner Dean both at one million.
I did.
And then the remaining two million, the the average came to one point five eight.
They screwed up.
But yeah, I didn't.
But, you know. Wow, everybody's shifting to blame them, but you know. I am comfortable with the average. I can live, I can live with it. I will go to the others. Can you live with it?
Yeah.
Can you? I'm commission.
I think, uh, I I would like to see more, but if like the land purchase to get that ball rolling, absolutely.
One point five, what what did you say?
Five eight.
Okay, one point five eight.
Thank you. And then the last question I have for the commission is, are you also going to move forward with the forty-seven thousand dollars for the fire truck?
Yes. Okay, and then we continue the discussion with the others. Do we have at the, at this time, any final comments from the commission?
Maybe one question, so what? What have we sort of committed to?
We've committed to two million twenty thousand dollars. So if I take that from your original, um. Uh, two point nine.
And that includes the fire truck.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so you've committed to a million twenty thousand out of the two nine nine eight nine.
Okay. Any final comments?
Mayor, what what we will do, and obviously not for the next commission meetings, but. I think the direction I'm getting is to prepare a resolution for commission consideration on these. Or items.
Yeah. Okay.
Mister Mayor, I hate to muddy the water.
But then don't do it.
Just from the standpoint, was Commissioner Reed gonna log back in to this meeting or she done? Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to indicate that a- after the that, you have nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars left.
Okay, thank you. With no further comment, this meeting is adjourned.